Just state your name, title for the record, please.
John Mason, Parks and Recreation. On your agenda under new business at the end, you'll see, I just wanted to explain the new playground spray park. We received a state grant to redo the playground in Nonotack Park, the one closest to Sheen and Coughlin. I should have designs for it next week. And then we're also putting money into the spray park. It needs to be res serviced and add another fixture in that. So, the governor, I was at unveiling of this grant program. It's called Our Common Backyard Grant. And we had a thing with the governor yesterday down in Taunton. And one of the things the governor is stressing that he wants this done this calendar year for his administration, he wants it on his docket. So, I'm hoping we can expedite this process in the next few weeks so we can get moving on this project. It is definitely something the governor is looking forward to move quickly on this. So, we've started on our end getting design work done in advance. It's no cost for our park, for the design work, so that is no charge whatsoever. So, any questions on?
You know, when public speak time, they're limited by open meeting laws, how much we can discuss, obviously. This will be moved to subcommittee today, and you'll have, obviously, the more detailed discussions. And so certainly, when it's on the finance agenda, check with Councilor Hagan to expedite this.
Yep, that's why I just wanted to make sure you guys understood what that project was all about.
Thank you.
Donald Psychowski, 86 Pomoy Street, East Hampton, Mass. This was Elite Gazette. I want everybody to listen carefully and a viewing audience. The intent on Proposition Two and a Half has been lost. Somehow, the intent on Proposition Two and a Half has been lost since it went into effect in 1982. The law that had in place occurred municipal exercises prior to 1982. There were two numbers on each tax bill, school in general. Departments submitted budgets. The amount collected from taxpayers went up, and at the time, this guy from Florence wrote this, "At the time, the damn school department was $600,000." There was a school department. To accommodate late start times at the high school, all it had to do was put the amount in the budget, and it was there, period. Then came in '82, and the fat began to melt away. Over the last 30 years, the government has gotten lean and done away with extras. Only recently, the city retiring city employees to sign up and make Medicare their primary health payer instead of the city. Interesting, the focus is often was what if someone else's money? Since '82, the city has gotten creative with financing services, bypassing Proposition Two and a Half. Create enterprise funds. First came solid waste, then water and sewer, now storm water and flood control. All these are outside the governance of Proposition Two and a Half. And the general city funds later freed up over $350,000. For the general fund, by moving the expense to the new enterprise fund, the rate for which is controlled by the city council. The city can set the rate for these fund services as they wish. Open meetings may be held to allow for public input, but that's all that's required by state law. The taxpayer has no control. My tax bill for fiscal year 2014 went up 7.9 percent. This is a guy from Northampton, a long way from Two and a Half. Add that to the increase in water and sewer, and it soon would be storm water free. Overall increases approaching 10 percent. Proposition Two and a Half has disappeared, just like the magician would smoke a mirror. Some say Two and a Half has gone too far, and perhaps they're right, especially considering the state has not held up its head. But you better hope that some magician doesn't find a way to finance any more of the city government, like the education department, to an enterprise fund. They had a very important letter, and I was one of the people who are involved.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public who would like to come to the podium and address the council concerning something other than public hearings? Okay, not seeing any, we can move on. We have no communications or correspondence. May I make a communication? Mayor Kager.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I would just like to let everybody know, I think most of you know, but those of you who don't, our director of personnel, her last day is tomorrow, Risa Riggit. So, if you happen to be, you know, in the area and you wanted to stop in and wish her well, and we're looking at an estimated time of having a new employee in the beginning of July. So, if you have any questions, just let me know, and that's all I have to say.
Any questions for the mayor now? Okay, thank you. Councilor Hagan.
Just back for the mayor. If I could indulge the chair, if I did have something I wanted to mention during communications, if we can go back.
Okay.
Just two quick items. I noticed an article about, and I always look for East Hampton people who tend to make us proud, and there's an article on Mr. Steve Jones, I know we mentioned the biking individual food meetings back. This particular person, he's a little older student at Hoyou Community, but he was one of the 29 who shined, which every public higher ed institution has one student that the state house recognizes. And he was the recipient from Hoyou Community, he's a rock veteran. Aside from his academic achievements, he also opens his home to the homeless vets on Christmas. And I just thought it was a special person in East Hampton that could win such an award. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, just today, a former city councilor, Mitchell, asked me if I'd recognize three outstanding young women from East Hampton High School. As some of you know, Mr. Mitchell assists in some of the lifting and exercise things for the high school. And he wanted the council to know that East Hampton High School senior Catherine Collins, East Hampton High School junior Jordan Burt, and East Hampton High School junior Jen Zephyr competed in Waterbury, Connecticut against lifters from New England and New York. And that Ms. Collins set a teen world record for the deadlift at under 123 pounds. Ms. Burt set a teen world record for the deadlift under 185 pounds. And Ms. Zephyr just missed a record in her last lift in the bench. I don't know the nuances of these things, and I don't know much about powerlifting, but I was asked if I could read that. It just never amazes me, some of the talented diversity we have in this city that come forward. So, thank you, I apologize for taking.
Any world record, you sound impressive to me.
And I don't know what to do with it.
Thank you very much for making those notes of memorable. Jiffy?
Somebody came to my attention that over the weekend, I was very impressed, there were apparently 175 youth who participated in the fishing derby here, sponsored by the East Hampton Rod and Gun Club. I just wanted to say thank you. I think it's great to bring families and youth together here in the city at the pond, and I hope that continues for a long, long time. I know we'll be having the boardwalk soon, hopefully, and I hope that the two can mesh well together.
Yeah, terrific. Thank you.
While we're giving the kudos out, first of all, Mr. Jones, he's my cousin's son, so he's Raymond.
I didn't know that.
But besides that, the big rig day, we're downtown, and I'll tell you, unfortunately, I'm hearing that it's going to be the last. No? Was that put out there? But anyways, I hope it's not, because we saw families, we saw, it was just a wonderful event, kids walking around with balloons and looking at all the, kids love big machines, so, yeah, that was another kudo for East Hampton. I'm just going to put the plug in for Culture Chaos, which is going to happen in June, too, so stay tuned, because that's going to be an exciting event, so, yeah.
Great. Yeah, we have a lot of great things going on in East Hampton, that's no doubt. Moving on, I think we can fit in some standard committees, Rules of Government Relations, Council Wist.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President. We will set a meeting soon.
Okay, finance, Councilor Hagan.
Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, a little off our usual schedule, and the next one after that will be Wednesday, both next week, the 27th and 28th. At Wednesday's, excuse me, Tuesday's meeting, we'll be taking up Sections 3, 6, 7, and 10. And on Wednesday, we'll be taking up 2, 4, 5, 11, and 12, and hopefully, that will conclude the budget review. Just as a note for people that might be interested in the parks section, the park director asked if he has sort of items on both nights, if he could do all those items on Wednesday night, so I'll try to accommodate them on that. Also, I need to set some public hearings tonight on a few items. The first is, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the FY 2015 city budget.
Second, we have motion, the next?
So, what's the date?
June 4th.
I have a second on that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
I'd also like to set a public hearing for June 4th, also at 6:15, for the pay plan ordinance that was sent to committee last week, go last meeting.
Second, okay, we have motion a second to set a public hearing June 4th for the pay plan information. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And the other two I'll do together. They're both supplemental appropriations, in which I've already done a first reading. One is a $30,000 appropriation to Water Capital, and the other is a $98,000 request to be appropriated to stabilization. And I'd like to set a public hearing on both of those items, which will be taken up also at committee this week.
Second?
June 4th. Well, we'll take them up at committee, but these will be for June 4th.
Okay, we have motion a second of public hearing June 4th for the $30,000 and $98,000 supplemental appropriations. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And I believe the rest of the items will be taken up tonight at the public hearings. That concludes finance for the time being.
Question, Councilor Hagan, the 195 for the bonding borrowing?
Right, that we're going to take up at new business. There's two items at new business.
Okay.
Wouldn't we also say a public hearing?
Okay.
I just wanted to do, no, what I do in the first reading, I'll say.
Okay, thank you.
Public safety, Councilor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the public safety subcommittee met on April 13th, and we discussed the approval of the Autumn Drive on Willow Circle street acceptances.
May?
Pardon?
Wrong name, but that's okay.
I thought that was the date that we had met.
You said April.
Oh, sorry. It was May 13th. And we discussed the approval of Autumn Drive on Willow Circle. We're going to continue to discuss that. So, I'd like to make a motion to do a 90-day extension.
Okay, we have motion a second for 90-day extension on the Willow Circle Autumn Drive. Councilor.
Just a question, was the public hearing continued to June 4th or to another date?
Yes, it was.
It was continued to June 4th.
Should we also include in the motion to continue that or not?
We'll just do it on June 4th.
Yeah, we'll do it on June 4th.
So, we have motion a second, I believe. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
We also talked about the stoplight placement at the intersection of Highland Avenue, Route 10, and since that's a state road, we created a letter asking the state for their recommendations because it's a state road, so that letter will be sent this week. And I would like to make a motion to remove that from our, remove without prejudice.
From our agenda. Motion a second, remove without president's prejudice, the Highland Ave-North Hampton Street intersection discussion. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
We have also been talking about the street acceptance protocol, and that will be continuing on it. Our next meeting, which is to be determined, we'll decide that date after this meeting. Also, for street acceptances, we have Kingsbury Way, Bearberry Drive, and Birchwood Drive, and I would like to make a motion for a 90-day continuance on those street acceptances.
Second. Okay, motion a second for 90-day continuation on Kingsbury Way, Bearberry Drive, Birchwood Drive. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
And this concludes your report from public safety.
Outstanding job, Councilor Hayes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I will take, accept a motion for open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Councilor Hagan, that's all you tonight.
Our first public hearing tonight is interdepartmental transfer, and I'll do a second reading on that. It's a letter dated April 10th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $7,000, and it is to be transferred from the street lights, light and power and that amount, and transferred to the building operation technical services. And the amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a shortfall in miscellaneous technical services. I know the mayor can add to this. It's my understanding that we have, she has, a little in her budget left from some of the power that we've generated from our solar, and the need is that with the school department being open on Fridays, certain items, such as the elevator, had to be reset so that just goes to the school department on Fridays. There were some cameras that were also purchased, and the mayor, I'm sure, can add some more before we.
Right, that's exactly correct. The, what you were referring to with the streetlights, because it is a little different to be transferring from one budget to another, these are both budgets that are in my office. And the reason the streetlight is doing a little better than normal is because of the credits we receive for the solar power. The solar power is credited onto many of the different building utilities, but the streetlight ones, it had a higher credit than anyone else. So, that's why I was able to find some extra funds in there to supplement our building operations budget. And as you know, the building operations budget is just that. It takes care of all the expenses for the council on aging, the town hall, 50 Paceon Avenue, and 32 Paceon Avenue. But just for miscellaneous and technical, we had two elevators that didn't pass inspection, and the bills were, just for just the repair, to get it to pass inspection, was over $6,000. So, that kind, and at this time of the year, that kind of threw us a little bit out of lack. The other thing that we've had that Councilor Hagan was mentioning is, we did some elevator locks so that the building doesn't go, you know, to the different floors on Friday. We also put in some security cameras. But honestly, the real reason for the building operations budget suffering is the unbelievable increase in all our utilities that started in January. So, we're working, you know, we're working closely with our energy advisory committee on aggregating for electricity, natural gas, and, you know, hopping in any way we can to, you know, save some expenditures. Any questions?
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council concerning that appropriation? I'll take that, Councilor Hagan.
Now, I'll make the following motion, that the council approve the interdepartmental transfer for $7,000, and it'll be transferred from streetlights, light and power, and transferred to building operation technical services. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a shortfall in miscellaneous technical services.
Second. Okay, motion a second for the departmental transfer of $7,000. Any additional discussions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Second public hearing tonight is also an interdepartmental transfer dated April 28th, 2014. I'll do a second reading on this. The amount requested is $3,974, and it's to be transferred from the reserve fund, and that amount, $3,974, and transferred to the mayor's full-time clerical, $3,974. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide a short, excuse me, to provide funds for a shortfall in personnel services. Again, the mayor can add more detail to this. What this is, is when Mayor Kager became mayor, she, obviously, her vacation time and that all went away, so that had to be paid out to her prior to that, because the mayor doesn't get vacation time, which I found out at the hearing.
Hopefully.
Right. Let's play this around salaries, anytime you take is.
That's exactly correct.
And it was also a replacement that came in at the time.
Right, so what happened is, when you're an elected official, you're no longer a city employee, so I, you know, had it to be paid out for my vacation time, the time that I hadn't used, and the time that I had earned. Pay plan people are the, I think this is worth bringing up, pay plan people are the only group of people that do not get buyback sick time. So, my five months' worth of sick time went away. But anyway, so that's what this is, and this is exactly what will happen, you know, when any employee leaves, like I was talking about our director of personnel. So, when she leaves tomorrow, she'll be paid out for the vacation time that she has on the books. And, you know, it certainly wasn't anything we planned on when you're doing a budget, either way. So, any questions on that?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to address that appropriation? Not seeing any, Councilor Hagan.
I'll make then the following motion, that the council approve the interdepartmental transfer of $3,974, and it'll be transferred from the reserve fund and transferred to the mayor's full-time clerical, that amount, $3,974, to provide funds for a shortfall in personnel services.
Second. Okay, motion a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $3,974. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Our third public hearing tonight is an interdepartmental transfer also, dated April 24th of 2014. I'll do a second reading. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. The amount requested is $4,000, and it's to be transferred from the reserve fund, and that amount, $4,000, and transferred to the ambulance professional services. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a shortfall in medical billing services. As it came up at the finance subcommittee, this is one of the few times that we're actually appropriating money, can somewhat be a good thing. And if it's okay with the chair, the council, I'd like the fire chief to come up and explain exactly how this works.
Good evening, David Mott, Fire Chief. The council is correct. This is a request that you should hope has six or seven digits instead of just the $4,000. We have a private company that does our medical billing, and they charge us 4% of the receipts that we take back. So, what my hope is, the last bill comes in for June, that I squeak by with this $4,000 additional, because this $4,000 is the 4% that we pay them. So, it's about a $96,000 return. The way this line item is figured, when Mayor Tausnick built the budget, he estimated what ambulance receipts would be, and then we would build this line item amount based on his estimate. Right now, we're on pace to exceed what he estimated for revenue. We're probably going to exceed that by about $80,000 to $90,000, which is next year, if I'm correct, most of it will be free cash, and it all goes back to the general fund. As of the billing cycle that just came in from April, ambulance receipts in hand is So, this is a good thing when I come back and ask for this one. That means we've exceeded our revenue anticipation. It's partially in because of a busier year and raising our ambulance rates March 1st.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so I'm going to quote you, that this is a good transfer request.
It is. I didn't break anything to get this one.
Any additional questions for the chief? Is anyone else from the public who would like to address the council concerning that appropriation? Councilor Hagan.
Make the following motion, that the council approve the interdepartmental transfer dated April 24th, and the amount requested is $4,000, and it'll be transferred from the reserve fund and transferred to the ambulance professional services, amount of $4,000, to provide funds for a shortfall for medical billing services.
Second. Motion a second for the departmental transfer of the $4,000 from the reserve fund to ambulance professional services. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
We now move on to our fourth public hearing. The next three will all be supplemental appropriations. The first one we're going to take up tonight is the supplemental appropriation. I'll do a second reading dated March 11th. The request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $15,000, and it's to be appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Fund, and that amount, $15,000, and appropriated to the Historic Records Preservation. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund the preservation of historic records in the city clerk's office. This has been an ongoing project that's been funded by the CPA, in which we started taking, or I shouldn't say us, the clerk's office through a vendor have started taking our very old death and marriage records and putting them in a form that actually is usable for the public if somebody comes in. And I'm sure the clerk would be more than happy to explain it further for the counselors, but it's very, if you haven't been down there, it's really an impressive system. They now are in books, and it's very easy if someone comes in for an old record, that the clerk or the assistant clerk could just take that item out, Xerox it, and give it back, where the other thing was all in a binding, and they had to squeeze it down, which was creating damage. The CPA, they, Ms. LaBumbar came with two options, one was for $10,000, and one was for $15,000, and the CPA wanted to fund the $15,000, which should bring our death records now up to 1950, and our marriage records up to 1951. And I think if I'm correcting what Barbara said, at this point, if we had to, her office could almost do the rest of them, because they're in a little different form by just buying the supplies and not necessarily hiring out this professional company. It's just those real old records are very fragile, and the way they were bound created a lot of damage. So, that said, I don't know if the city clerk wants to add anything, or you'll have a question.
Are they digital?
They're not digital to my knowledge. They're, you know, the old binding books.
Did you want anything more, Barb?
You did a good job.
Okay, so is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on that appropriation? Not being seen, Councilor Hagan.
I'll make the following motion, that the council approve the following supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $15,000, and it'll be appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Fund and appropriated to the Historic Records Preservation, an amount of $15,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund the preservation of historic records in the city clerk's office.
Second. Motion a second for supplemental appropriation of $15,000 from CPA to Historic Records Preservation. Any additional discussion or comments, Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is a great use for the CPA money. Anytime that we can preserve history, I'm all for it. As someone who does genealogy and goes into different cities and towns, tracking down family members that have disappeared a long, long, long time ago, these records are so valuable, and to have them so that you're accessible to them, you have no idea how many times I've gone into city clerk's offices and asked for these things, and they're like, oh, no, we can't give you that, they're falling apart, and, you know, we just, you can't touch them, and so this is really a great appropriation. Thank you, Barbara, for taking good care of the history of East Hampton, and we applaud you for that, and thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
And again, just as a reminder to our listeners, that CPA appropriations, limited appropriations, is not for historic preservation, open space.
And recreation, which is the newest category is recreation.
And this is obviously not competing funds for DPW or anything of that sort. So, I think there's a motion a second, so any additional comments? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Our next public hearing is the, also a supplemental appropriation. I'll do a second reading. The amount requested is, excuse me, is dated April 28th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $18,000, and it's to be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings, and that amount, $18,000, appropriated to the wastewater overtime. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund an expected shortfall in wastewater personnel services. There's a letter in here to Mr. Kipchinsky from Carl Williams, who's the wastewater treatment supervisor, that kind of outlines why he's having a shortfall, which was some of our bad weather this winter, and some pump station repairs, alarms. One of the employees took a week of paid sick, which is part of their contract rather than that they weren't foreseeing. And a lot of it, I think, came from, if the counselors remember, is one of our arms, the automatic arms on the wastewater. arms on the wastewater broke. Until we got the funding, they were actually paying people to actually do that by hand. So I think this is partially a result of that also.
Mary, did you want to add anything more to that, or is that?
Just one quick thing that you made note of. In the letter to Mr. Pachinski, you'll notice that the DPW wastewater, water, all of them, they do so much of the work in-house, which saves the city a lot of funding. I mean, it's incredible that they do this, and it's something that, you know, I think they really should be acknowledged for. And it's not just the wastewater, it's the water department. And by not contracting out, not only do they save money, but they're able to do a lot more repairs, so they get a lot more for the money.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to address the council concerning that appropriation? Not being seen. Councillor Hagan.
Our final public hearing tonight is as follows. It's a supplemental appropriation dated April 28th. I'll make the following motion for the full council on the supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $18,000. It'll be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings and appropriated to wastewater overtime, in that amount, $18,000, to fund an expected shortfall in the wastewater personnel services.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, for the $18,000 supplemental appropriation from enterprise retained earnings to wastewater overtime. Any additional discussion or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
Before I do the final appropriation, I just want to say that if Councillor Wynn hadn't switched her seat, she would have kicked me in the leg by now, and I would have I would have known, I would have known.
It's your job.
I would have known my mistake. Our final public hearing tonight is as follows, a supplemental appropriation dated April 28th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $21,400, and it'd be appropriated from the enterprise fund, enterprise retained earnings, $21,400, and appropriated to water, pipe, and fittings. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund the repair of the water main on Pomeroy Street. Like all the prior ones, this was approved 3-0 by Finance. If any of you read this one in the paper, this was the water leak, I believe, that went on for quite some time, and they couldn't locate exactly where the water was leaking, because I guess it was underneath a stream. And when they finally located, this was, you know, the cost or the estimated cost of all the work that needed to do to repair it. So I don't know, again, if the mayor has anything she wants to add to that one.
The gallons of water were leaked.
It was a lot.
It was a lot.
I was gonna make it a hissing noise, I said, so they couldn't find it.
Anyone from the public who would like to address that supplemental appropriation? Not being seen. Okay, councillor Hagan.
I'll make the following recommendation, that the council approve of supplemental appropriation of $21,400. That'll be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings and appropriated to water, pipe, and fittings, $21,400. And the amount requested will be used to repair, to fund the repair of the water main on Pomeroy Street.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, for supplemental appropriation of $21,400 from enterprise retained earnings to water pipe fittings. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. Entertained a motion and closed public hearing? The movement is a second.
Second.
A motion, a second, closed public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. I believe we left off that appointment. Councillor Wynn?
Yes, thank you. We met tonight at 5:15 to review two mayoral appointments from the meeting that we had on May 7th. The two appointments were for the Energy Advisory Committee with Wendy Blumenthal, and for the Licensing Board on William Sullivan. However, between the time of May 7th and to tonight, the mayor had received a letter from Mr. Sullivan requesting that his name be taken off for reappointment from the Licensing Board due to several outside organizational and time commitments that he's had. So with that being said, I would first like to commend Mr. Sullivan for his 17 years of service on the Licensing Board, and we wish him very well in other pursuits that he is always involved in, and obviously keeping him very busy. So we moved forward with Wendy Blumenthal. The report came that, well, the two members that were at the meeting tonight voted unanimously to move her appointment forward to the full city council. So at that time, I will make the motion that the city council appoint Wendy Blumenthal to the Energy Advisory Committee with her term of expiration of December 31st, 2015. And these appointments are on a revolving appointment schedule, so that they're not all made at the same time for the Energy Advisory Committee.
Okay, so we'll take this one at a time. There'll be a motion, a second, to accept Wendy Blumenthal. So all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. I think
Thank you.
we need to take action.
I will, yep. And I would ask the city council to, and this will be in the form of a motion, that we remove William Sullivan from the licensing board as a mayoral appointment.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, for a move, the request of William Sullivan for the Licensing Board. All those in.
When does his term end?
I'll get to that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, in the second half of the report. So it was supposed to be for June 2nd, 2020. It's a six-year appointment per state law, so.
Yeah, so I think it would, this would probably be ending like June 1st or 2nd for 2014, probably be when his last day would come.
I just had a question. I was wanting to read the letter. He's not seeking reappointment, but we're voting on, what was the?
He's on the agenda for appointments that were moving him from.
Named from appointment for the, I heard it differently. I'm moved from the licensing board currently. Wait a minute, guys, what are we doing here? Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
Question, councillor Derby, did you have a question?
No.
You answered it. So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
Okay, so moving on, because he has removed his name from the appointment, we have a position, one vacancy on the Licensing Board that is now open again. The caveat to that is because it is a state mandated appointment through the state authority, it is a six-year appointment, and one member, per state law, shall be appointed from each of the two leading political parties. Right now, on the Licensing Board, we have a Republican and we have an Independent. So the next person that the mayor needs to bring forth to us needs to be from the Democratic Party. So I'm putting that out there, so if anybody's interested in serving on the Licensing Board, they must be a member of the Democratic Party, and they need to send their letter of intent or their letter of appointment request to the mayor. Yes.
Just a question. So no Libertarians, no other party member, no, no, wouldn't it be of any other party other than a Republican or an Independent?
Two leading political parties.
Leading.
Leading.
There's only two political parties in the state.
There are only two in the state.
According to, okay. No Green Parties, no?
Because our election expert here.
I bow to the expert. I understand, Barb. Wow, that's surprising.
Yeah, they have to be registered Democrats. Yep. Okay. So with that being said, I also, the mayor has reached out to me to make some announcements for our other boards and committees that have openings. So if you'll bear with me, I'm going to take a few minutes, and I'm going to announce these. Now, mind you, anybody that is interested in serving on any of these boards or committees must apply through the mayor's office. So you can, you can call or come down here to 50 Pace and Avenue, and she has a short form that you can fill out with your intent on whatever board or committee that you wish to become a part of. So I'm gonna start in alphabetical order with the Aquifer Protection Committee. There's two vacancies, and it's a three-year term. Agricultural Commission, alternate. There are three vacancies, three-year term. Barnes-Aquifer Committee, there's one vacancy, it's a three-year term. Charity Income Distribution Committee, one vacancy, three-year term. Commissions on Disability, there are seven vacancies, it's a three-year term. Conservation Commission, two vacancies, three-year term. CPA Committee, there's one vacancy, it's a two-year term. Development and Industrial Committee, four vacancies, three years. ECA+ four vacancies, three years. Energy Advisory Committee, one and two associates, three years. Fair Housing Committee, two openings, three years. Housing Partnership, one opening, three-year. Industrial Finance Authority, four openings, three years. The Licensing Board I already went over. Manhand Rail Trail, three openings, three years. Manhand Rail Trail, twice, two openings, two years, two different appointment year cycles. Planning Board, alternate, one opening, three-year appointment. School Building Committee, two openings, and the term ends December 31st of 2014. Zoning Board of Appeals, an associate, two associate vacancies, three-year term. And then I have a letter from the Council on Aging and Enrichment Center. The following volunteer positions are available at the East Hampton Council on Aging. Friends Cafe Volunteers, looking for volunteers as soon as possible who are willing to work in the fun team setting. Must be able to smile, have an interest in cooking, and expand your horizons. Please contact Kim Jensen, Activity Coordinator, at 527-6151 to fill out an application. Core check and interview are required. And they have the companion program, where they need volunteer drivers are needed immediately to assist clients, which transportation to and from medical appointments, hairdresser, barber, pharmacy, shopping, and more. Volunteers can receive mileage reimbursement of 56 cents a mile to help offset the cost of using your own vehicle. A clean driving record and core are required. And you can contact Linda Talbot, Director of the Council on Aging, at 527-6151. Mr. President, that ends my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on. Ordinance, councillor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think mine would be quite so detailed. The ordinance subcommittee met last Wednesday, May 14th, and we discussed the two items on our agenda. One of the things was the rezoning of the Parson Street School that we discussed. And we came to a consensus and voted 3 to 0 to move that issue forward to the full council and the planning board. So in the form of a motion, I would like to move that ordinance and planning board be sent, the rezoning of the Parson Street School at 48 Parson Street, to Neighborhood Business.
Second. Hey, a motion, a second, to move both ordinance and the planning board, the request for Neighborhood Business rezoning of Parson Street School property. Any additional comments, councillor, request?
How far back on the parcel are we talking about?
About 330 feet, but that hasn't been completely dialed, and that's one of the things that is gonna come out in the discussions with the planning board. But right now, what we're looking at is about 330 feet from Parson Street back, which would allow for parking and other uses that, in the back of the building, which would still leave about an acre beyond that.
And then, of course, subject to, that's subject to change also.
Yes.
Yes, okay, good.
Councillor Hagan.
Oh, we received some information from the planner. Is this consistent with what the planner?
It is.
Is what the planner recommended?
Yes.
Okay, again, this is just the first stage. It's just saying that the committees.
Yes, that's correct.
And here, yeah. Any additional comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Property, councillor Ziegler.
I don't have a report this evening, but just a general reminder that our next meeting is on June 5th at 6:00 PM downstairs. And I guess last time I did miss speak, but I believe everybody has received the report from city planner Jessica Allen now. It was in our mailboxes as of this week. So, and that concludes.
Thank you. New business looks like it's councillor Hagan.
Two items of new business. The first one I'll do a first reading on, I'll take up is an interdepartmental transfer. It's dated May 15th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $10,500, and is to be transferred from the following sewer and wastewater treatment reserve fund, in the amount of $6,000, and the water reserve fund, in the amount of $4,500. And it will be transferred to the following. $2,000 will be transferred to the wastewater treatment overtime. Sewer overtime will have a transfer of $4,000, and water overtime will have a transfer of $4,500. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a shortfall in overtime. I request that this be sent to Finance for review.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, for the interdepartmental transfer of $10,500 to Finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
While I'm on this particular interdepartmental transfer, I'd also like to set a public hearing on this matter for June 4th, 6:15. And I'll do that in the form of a motion.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, to set a public hearing for the $10,500 interdepartmental transfer for June 4th. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
Our final item of new business tonight is a bonding and borrowing request. I'll do a first reading on this. It's dated May 14th, 2014. It's from the mayor, requesting the following. The amount requested is $195,000, and it's being funded by borrowing, to be borrowed or bonded for, to pay costs of completing the design permitting bidding and construction of new open space recreational facilities at Nonna Tuck Park. And if you bear with me, I have to read the following language, much like when we did the boardwalk, because this is a reimbursable grant from Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I move that $195,000 is appropriated to pay costs of completing the design permitting bidding and construction of a new open space recreational facility, Nonna Tuck Park Playground and Spray Park, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow $195,000 to pay the cost of the recreational facility under, in pursuit of chapter 44, section 7, subsection 2 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city, therefore, and that the Nonna Tuck Park Playground and Spray Park be dedicated to active park and recreational purposes, under Mass. General Law, chapter 45, section 3, to be managed and controlled by the Park and Recreation Commission of East Hampton, and that said commission be authorized to enter into all agreements and to execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the City of East Hampton to officiate the, excuse me, the development of the park, and that the commission be further authorized to file on behalf of the city any and all applications deemed necessary for the grants and or reimbursements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the R Common Backyards Grant Program to develop the park.
Second. A motion, a second, to move to Finance the bonding bar request of the $195,000. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Is this the park that is right on the outside by the tennis courts, or is it the one inside a little bit?
It's not the one on the outside. It's inside the park. So if you go into the park, I think there's like the first area, and there's a spray park there, and a playground.
As a parent, I just want to say that I'm really happy to see this park being replaced, that it, the safety concerns of the current playground, simply because it's been there for so long, and the modifications that they've made to play equipment since then, I'm really glad to see it being updated.
Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'd like to also set a public hearing. As Mr. Mason mentioned, this is something that I think we have to complete before the end of the fiscal year. So I'd also for a public hearing on this borrowing and bonding of the $195,000 for June 4th at 7:15.
Second. A motion, a second, to set a public hearing on this bonding bar request of the $195,000 for June 4th. Any additional comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. Councillor Riss.
I would like to take a moment to publicly thank Risa Rigga for her many years of service to our community. Having been on the council for many, many years, and as president, I have often had to have use of her office and her service. She has been extraordinarily knowledgeable and has prevented disaster in many occasions that I have in the past been witness to. And in the form of a motion, I would like the full council, through the office of its president, president, send a letter of thanks. Perhaps it would be penned by the clerk so that we can all publicly thank her for her many years of service. So, that's a motion that a letter be sent to her.
Second. A motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I believe she, we instituted that a while back where we, any, actually, any city employee here retires gets a letter, am I correct, Barb?
Yes.
Gets a letter from the council.
Oh, okay.
But we will...
I'd just like to publicly thank her.
Yeah, we've been doing that for any city employee. But that motion has passed and will be completed by, as I said, what was already set up. So, unless there's any other discussion, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion is second. A motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion passes. See you again.
Thanks.
That's meeting.
Hi, Ann.
You all. Started.
One minute you're a healthy person, the next minute you have breast cancer.
You don't cook much, do you?
Etta Mae is up early these days. She lives a much different life than when she was a nurse working the night shift.
I hear.
She'd be just getting to sleep about now.
I was always exhausted. I don't know of any of the nurses that work those shifts, especially the night shift gals, that weren't exhausted.
Women that work night shift, they have higher incidence of breast cancer.
Virginia Tech molecular biologist Carla Finkelstein wants to know more about the impact of night shift work on a woman's body clock. Can working odd hours alter her body chemistry, turning healthy cells into cancer cells?
What we're trying to understand is how changes in that environmental conditions influence the expression of genes.
With support from the National Science Foundation, Finkelstein uses frog embryos to help figure out the physiological changes in women who work the night shift. She says studies show that working night owls have abnormal levels of specific proteins in their cells which control the genes that regulate how the cells grow and divide. Finkelstein injects those proteins into the frog cells to study their effects.
That could end up in cancer. It could end up in very many other diseases, but in, in our studies, we believe that end up in abnormal proliferation of cancer cells.
Finkelstein also studies the role a woman's body clock plays in treating the disease. Using human cancer cells, she tests whether radiation therapy is more effective when given at certain times of the day.
So, people that actually has the disease can receive treatments at a time of the day that makes the medicine more effective.
We are the face of breast cancer. I don't know if there's any way that I can protect my grandchildren or my nieces from getting this disease, but that's what I would like to do.
Cancer survivors say they are up against another clock.
I have two daughters, three granddaughters. I don't want them to get it. I would like to see no women die from breast cancer.
So, I hope that, you know, in 20 years from now, you're not interviewing me about breast cancer, but we can talk about some of that.
For Science Nation, I'm Miles O'Brien.